Interact with you and meet just one more time. Anyone? So every Friday, Madam Gauru, my meeting join out of the room. So. So at last, in twenty twenty three, I'm getting big plan, fifty lakh seven. So pretty okay, but also participate, and there is a chance. Yes, sir, Naree, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Good evening.
How are you?
Good morning, ma'am. I am fine, sir. Good morning, ma'am. Good morning.
Good to see you.
Yes.
Sir, how is your regard?
Hi, ma'am. Hello, madam. Subodh.
I'm not gonna talk to you until I see your face.
You want to see my face, right?
There you go.
I'm in outside right now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, how are you doing, ma'am?
I'm doing, I'm doing better. Seriously, I'm a little swollen because I'm getting all this therapy. But other than that, my arms are moving better. So every day I'm getting better and better and I'll be great soon. Yeah.
With the help of, with the help of Atami first, right?
Yes, absolutely. None other than Atami. No, other than Atami, you know, right here, right here. Hello.
We're very good, ma'am.
Good to see you. From long time.
Ma'am, hardworking is my department, electrical department. Yeah.
There you go. Wait a minute. I just seen Rajini. Where did she go? I seen her face. No.
Yes, welcome Rajini, madam.
Wow, I see Rama too. Oh my goodness. Hey, woman, where have you been? Looking beautiful.
Hi, ma'am.
Hi. I text your daughter Happy New Year, you know, so.
Thank you. Same to you.
We're gonna have awesome two thousand twenty-three, okay?
Yes, 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 ma'am.
All right. Atami mama of a Hydra Bot team.
Yeah, thank you.
Hello. Rama, how are you, Diamond Master?
Yes, madam.
Good to see you. There you go. This is superb. I get to see everyone.
Yes, friends, if you have a chance, dress up, and interact with me. They will visit Madam's New Year, so Madam will visit. Oparagaru. Surentharadi Gauru. Ravi Kumar Gauru. Yes, sir. Samiradi Gauru.
Good evening, madam.
Hello.
I hope you are recovering fast.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I am.
Thank you. We are thankful to you. We are in your team. You are always energetic and enthusiastic and dynamic. We are always thankful to Mr. Bartram, you and Mr. Vasu. Always, always, you are all guiding us and making us a successful leaders in Atami. So we are very thankful to you. Thank you, ma'am.
Well, you're welcome. I don't do much, you know. It's the team that you have. If you have a leader like Vasu and Diamond Master Rama supporting you guys, guiding you guys. You know, I'm just here to find what I could do and just to let you guys know my experience that Atami will take us where nothing else has taken us to where we wanna be. Like I think I was talking to you last week, a lot of people think wealth is financial, big house, big car, you know, all that. But I'm getting to realize the true wealth is having good health. You know, I didn't know we have to make an effort to be healthy. It doesn't come automatically. You cannot order good health online, you know eBay or anything. You need to put the effort into your body. So you could have all the other achievements. Another wealth is time. I know Vasu is working this, building it, so he will have that time to spend with his boy, his wife and family. And that's another wealth. And the third is, of course, is financial. So I know of a lot of people who does not have health. If they could buy their health online, they would spend every penny, every rupee they have to achieve or to get that health. But we cannot do that in life, right? So all we're doing is teaching people that we have the most phenomenal product that actually works, that is absolutely, you know, best quality at absolute price. If they don't know, how are they gonna know if we don't tell them? So it is our duty, our job to be the representative of Atami and show them through our, how we look, how we feel, by our attitude, everything about us, when they see, they're gonna have to ask, what's up with your skin or what's up with your health and all that? And that's the time that we could say, it's Atami. Can I share, right? And when you share, they listen because you're being genuine, you're being transparent, you're being truthful, and you are the back of your products. And they get to believe you, trust you, and that's when they said, okay, I wanna try. And once they try it, like all of us, we fell in love with the product first. Then STP makes sense, showing the plan. That's when the STP comes in. But foremost, first, you got to try the product, any product. I am so, so happy that you guys finally got the milk thistle. A lot of people ask, you know, can healthy people pick milk thistle? The answer is absolutely. The reason? The liver is the most kindest organ that we have in our body. Even though it's eighty percent destroyed, it will not say, oh, I'm hurting. By the time your body feels, oh, something is wrong, especially with the liver, is never able to go back. It's very hard to return to good health when liver's been destroyed. Because it doesn't say I'm hurting until the last course of destruction. So it is very crucial to always take care of your liver. Yeah, you know, we people think, you know, I'm healthy. We all think we're gonna live long time not taking care of our health, which I was there because I didn't know. But now that I know that I've been educated, the health is wealth. You know, truly, you guys wanna live good health. Especially even getting the flu or cold, you don't feel good. Every day, I'm around, people coughing, fever, just any kind, right? I'm always around them. But yet, I haven't got the reaction from all those things because I know I take care of myself every day, as you know. Him or him, I don't only take two, I take four because this is my functional food. I take this like food, right? And then the noni, you know, vitamin C, just everything that our body needs to have that optimal position, then you don't have to worry. And then you're always upbeat, you don't miss a day, playing with your children, you know, doing things with your family, you don't, you're never down, you know what I mean, physically. So yes, our product is back on our business and be the product user. Every imperial master in our business, they make substantial income, you know that, you know how much they make. But yet, they use all Atami, lot of other businesses, right? Even though they do their products, but once they have that money, they think the most other stuff is better, so they buy expensive stuff. But everybody as an Atomian, they all use our product regardless, we make little or millions because our product works. And guess what? When we buy for ourselves, it, you know, it generates PV. And what does PV do? It generates your commission. So when you do that, you know, that's where the mastership comes. But I just want everyone here to understand, even without the mastership, you know, you guys can make one thousand two hundred dollars every single day, just generating general income. Yes, when you become a mastership, it's faster, quicker, and that's where we wanna go. But even though you don't have that mastership behind you, just as a sales master, you could earn up to thirty-two thousand dollars a month. Thirty-two thousand. Vasu, how much is that a month? In rupees, thirty-two thousand times, I think, is, let's say eighty-two right now.
Yes, fifty-seven thousand we'll get as a sales master, ma'am.
Like, no, what I'm saying is that just being, you know, sales master, I'm trying to accumulate, right? Income, general income, as a sales master, this is how much you can make a month, rupees.
Twenty-six lakhs. Twenty-six lakhs.
Yes, just in general commission, and you could only be sales master, right? Long as you have, you don't even have to be sales master. All you have to have, your PV all the way to twenty-four lap, right? Then you could make twelve. What I'm saying is that it takes consumers, consumers, consumer, consumer. People who use your product. Without the product, you're not gonna generate PV. If without the PV, you're not gonna generate commission. So, you know, instead of, I know a lot of people in general in India, they're all just focusing on STP, which is, you know, showing the plan, right? Yes, it's great. Nobody has marketing like Atami. We have the best system and it's not gonna change and it's gonna take us all to the top. We know that. And that's what our chairman said last night. Nobody has our marketing. But before that, everybody has to use the product. That's gonna generate. Consuming generates PV. Consumption generates PV. The more you have, the more money you make. Simple. Atami is so, so simple. We make it hard. So love it, share it, and have them part of your team, taking the him or him, taking him or him time, everyone at the center, whatever, right? And yes, any business takes a little bit of investment, little bit. In Atami, you don't have to. That is awesome. But if you could invest on any product that you could share with your downline or anybody who doesn't know Atami, have one product, say, hey, try it. Don't just give it to them. Open it. Have them take it right there. That's the only way you're going to reach those people. Because they don't know, especially the toothpaste and the toothbrush. If you don't have them, if you don't open, put the toothpaste and give it to them and say, try it. That, you know, they might not try it until, who knows when? And they think it's all same, same toothbrush, same toothpaste, they don't get excited. But when you give it to them and say, go brush your teeth, please, because I value your opinion. When they come back, they're gonna tell you exactly how they feel, how much they love it, and how do I get it? Simple. Basically, so two thousand twenty-three, let's start with the basics. Sharing your products and building consumers. One person, ten thousand PV in thirty days, see what that happens to for your business, for your downline. And again and again and again, don't go wide. Go deep when you, you know, are creating your business with your downline. Then everybody will be on same track. Another thing is that, for example, a new person comes in, right? You sign them up right underneath you, right? The first person that he brings, that person automatically has to go on the left. And the second person that comes in goes on their right. So now they got two people coming in. So they have someone they know, they know on the power line or, you know, the, um, your side, and the second person they bring is on their right. It seems like the first person they bring, because they have someone on the left, they put right away to the right. I don't do that. I used to do that in the beginning when I didn't know the business that well. First person they bring in automatically goes on left side. You don't know who that person is, but, you know, so that way, everybody is under strong line to help each other. So anyhow, I'm sorry, Vasu, if I took so long, but I just have to say that because I want everybody to know that that's so, so important. I don't want you guys to be lost. I want you guys to have a right track, build it correctly in the beginning. And the good thing about Atami is that if you make a mistake, you could always correct it later on, year later, two year later on, right? So that's amazing. It has time to rebuild because, oh my God, I made this mistake. Okay, you see that. So how am I gonna correct this? And you work with your partner, right? And then we could make that paradigm switch and, you know, move and it's amazing. This is Atami, but never, nobody ever loses out in Atami. Only time that you're gonna lose out is when you quit. That's it. Until then, remember, you know, last, last, I'm being honest with you guys. Last month in December, when I got the accident, I was very, very depressed for, I don't know, maybe three, four days because I was hurting. Just a lot of things happened to a point where I was doubting myself. What am I doing here, you know? Fourth year, I heard is very, very hard. So I had to get encouragement from my leaders from everywhere. Um, but what I'm saying is that I know many of you been with Atami, you know, two, three, I mean, one, two, three years, but you, you're not at where you wanna be. When you feel discouraged, when you feel down, when you feel like that thing's happening, think about bamboo tree, you know, that's the best analogy I could give you guys. Please think about bamboo tree. Five years, guys, five years, you, you water, take care of it, and you're looking at the ground, it's like, what is going on? Five years, nothing's happening, nothing. So they get discouraged, right? They wanna give up. But after five years, that bamboo shoots up, foot up, I mean, many feet, every single day. With Atami, it's not quick. It's something that you're building for lifetime, guys, lifetime. That's gonna give you passive income, residual income. It's not going to be easy. I'm being honest. It's hard work, dedication like Vasu, persistent, continuously. He wants to play. He don't wanna do this. Times he probably doesn't wanna do, but he does it anyway because that consistency is gonna come. Time to collect the reward. And when that happens, he's gonna be saying, wow, that's, everything that's happening in his life is what he has put in, that he's reaping. So don't get discouraged. When you get discouraged, you talk to the leaders. You don't talk to your downline. You talk to your leader, say, hey, you know, I need some encouragement. So please, I was there. I'm being, I'm sharing with you guys. I was there. But I know there's nothing like Atami. And sometimes you have to make that extra effort for that little bit of investment. Any business takes a little bit of investment if you wanna make it quicker and more solid. I'm not saying you have to, but it's better and faster, right? But Atami, you could start without no investment whatsoever, just talking to the people. But I know all of you, we're gonna be here next year, doing the same thing, but with a different titles, different focus, different, different leaders underneath you, it's gonna happen. Denise, it's gonna happen. Arya, it's gonna happen, right?
Yes, hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
Two hundred percent, ma'am.
Woo-hoo. Exactly.
At the same time, I'm very thankful to Mr. Bartram, who introduced it to this organization. It's healing me and curing me and activating me with these products. I'm quite happy with these products. So products are coming for me only, I feel. Mr. Hangil Park is a boon for us, really.
You look good too. Your continent, it looks very different than first time I saw you, seriously.
Yeah, yeah. Great, madam. Yes, ma'am. I'm using, using all products of ours, ma'am. Not only this, in my team, all highly qualified people, six people joined right now. And more, another hundred people are pumping, all teachers and MUOs and MROs, such people are coming to us. So automatically, we can shine, madam. I have taken a vote today. Definitely by twenty-fifth March, I can become Sharon Rose Master. And twenty-twenty-nine, I will become an Imperial Master. This is my decision today, ma'am. Thank you.
You know, this right here. I know Vasu is so dedicated, so dedicated, writing his journey, his dreams, and he's accomplishing every step of the way. You know, this, when you write it, think it, speak it, it's gonna come to pass. It is proven. That's why our chairman, Harmil Park, is always, always saying, do your diligence and write down your life scenario. Every month, if doesn't work out, change it, rewrite it. This is our life. We get to rewrite it many times as we want. We're the director of our life, right? So please take advantage of writing down and don't be afraid to share it. I love it, you know, you're doing future planning all the way to Imperial because we are gonna get there. That's what we're going for, Imperial Master. And we're gonna get there. And our chairman says, I got everything ready for you, million dollars, cars, everything ready for you. Come and get it. Anytime you want, he's ready. He's ready to give every one of you guys, every one of us, that million dollar celebration, everything. Go get it, guys. Let's go get it.
Yes, sir. Sri Ramaguru.
Sir, thank you, sir. Good morning, madam. How are you, ma'am?
Oh, I'm doing great. Thank you. Good to see you.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. It's a wonderful opportunity for giving this, this opportunity, ma'am. Thank you, thank you so much, ma'am.
It's your choice. It was your choice. You're the smart one. Yes, definitely. Anybody who chooses Atami is the smart one. And there's no doubt, yeah. There's so many things out there, and I know all of you try different things. Adam is gonna take you, when you focus, following the system and following Vasu's staff, you guys gonna make it. There's no doubt on that. Our system works. It's been proven over and over and over. So you're the smart one. Thank you for choosing Atami.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, thank you. Sir, thank you, sir. Thank you also.
Yes, Sarita, madam, welcome. Sarita Madam Gauru. Akshana Gauru, good evening, sir. And Balu Gauru. Oreganti Balu Gauru. Thank you. Yes, madam. Sarita, madam.
Sir.
Good evening, madam.
Good evening, sir.
If possible, video on this call, madam, hi Jepan, madam.
There she is. Hello, Miss Harida. How are you?
Fine, madam.
See? Look at your beautiful smile.
Thank you.
It feels different when we get to see each other, you know. It's just the picture and video, but the connection that we have, we're able to see each other, it is so different. I love seeing my Diamond Master Vasu on Zoom, even though I know him, I met most of you personally. But if I see you guys, it just makes me happy. It makes my day.
Thank you, thank you, Sarita, madam. Venkatesh Gaurukar, welcome, sir.
Sir, good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir. How are you?
Madam, happy new year.
Happy, happy, happy two thousand twenty-three.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So we signal low, weak on that room, sir. Clear, let's do. Bandwidth is gone, I still only. Yes, sir. Balu Gauru. Oreganti Balu Gauru.
Sir, sir, good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir. How are you?
Oh, fine, sir. I've looked at that so long time.
Hi, Nana.
How are you, sir?
Happy New Year, Karle.
Hi, sir.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Empty, sir.
Madam Kichappu, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
How are you, madam?
How are you, madam?
I'm doing good. Thank you so much. I'm doing good, thank you so much.
Okay, madam. We, we are using so many Atami products, madam. We are my family, Atami, madam. He's totally products of my family. Atami is my family, madam. Thank you, introducing my Vatsar to Atami. Some here.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
See, you know, this is what Adami does. It makes people so, so happy. And because Adam is all natural and it's good for your daughter. You can, you know, you feel confident. I'm very, very happy to give every product to my grand, I mean, great grandchildren, my grandchildren. I, I feel good that they're using the most healthy product. And taking the vitamins, you know, in here, I order gummy bear vitamin for my grandkids. We don't have it in United States, but I go out of source to get it. Oh, Basu. I found out yesterday. Um, but if you guys know people from Hy- not Hydra, but no, um, what, hold on, let me. This is something that I wanna share with you guys. Hold on, hold on, um. Where's that? Okay. Understand the mem- okay, okay, so make sure I understand this. My member in Bang- Bangladesh. I, do you guys know anybody in Bangladesh? What I'm saying is that if you do, if you sign them up. They could order products from India.
Yeah.
And now, and get, you know, and, you know, they will ship it to them, Adami, they will.
Oh, okay. I will find someone, madam, in Bangladesh. Definitely, I will form team.
Yeah, I mean, they're gonna be opening soon, so it'll be.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Balu, sir. Yes, sir, Radusina Gaurav, welcome, sir. And anyone in Kaurana, madam, Gaurav to interact, I don't know. And I just see video on this, could not learn, chandi, anyone? Uh, here is our Kalpana, madam.
Say what now?
So maybe she's busy with the family. She went there, her parents' house.
Okay.
Uh, Jitumena, welcome, Jitumena. Anyone in Kaurana, hand raise, smart, let us, chandi, madam, Gaurav, to the. Thank you, leaders, uh, all the best, everyone. Once again, Happy New Year to all. So, Erozo, Chalamandhi, Boda, interact, I, Naru, madam, Gaurav, to the, great. Thank you, madam. Thanks for your regular support.
I'm always here for you guys as much as I can. I was thinking about coming to India in April, but I guess, you know, if we go to Korea. And Shamrose Master trip is in April. I don't know how they're gonna do all this. I guess we have to choose where we're gonna, where we wanna go. Korea or Mexico Cancun in America, for Shamrose Master, we go to Cancun, right, Mexico? Um, yeah, everything is open. See, this is, when you get the, uh, to the mastership. You know, I mean, there's a rewards, fun, you get to go on a trip, take your family. So, um, well deserved, because we do go through. You know, little challenges here and there emotionally and all that and, but it's. There, there's Rajini showing the family. Hello.
Yes, madam, uh, here also, they announce a lot of, uh, offline seminars, uh, in India. Uh, they announced previously in January and February and March. So, we have one workshop in Jaipur in February twenty-six to twenty-eight. First time Atami India connecting, uh, workshop in Jaipur. And a lot of meetings are going in India.
That's a good thing, that means it's growing and so it's opportunity for you guys to talk to people more. I guess sooner, cause if you don't talk to them, somebody else will. Adam is well known in India, throughout India now. If you don't talk to that person that you was going to talk to. Next time that you see them, they're already a member from somewhere else. So, keep that in mind. If you some, you have someone in your mind and you wanna target and go talk to them. Go and make it happen, because you want them with you, then in, you know, someone else. So, please, don't procrastinate. Make a list and every single day, share. That's the best thing. If you can. Make sure you make a list and say, Diamond Master Vasu, I need help. Can you help me talk to these people? That's when the, you know, the, your leaders come in, cause they have more knowledge. You don't have to be the smart one, you don't have to know everything. You just bring that person front of. The one who knows. This time, your leader, Basu, bring them to center, whoever, or at a meeting place. And keep your mouth kinda quiet, let. Your leader, you need to edify your sponsor, your leader first, right? You don't say, you know, Adam is great and, you know, that, you don't say this person is great to Vasu. It's opposite. You have to let your downline or new person coming in, how great Vasu is. It, you know, I don't know, some people, you know, they always trying to tell me how great this person is. Found out later, you know, I mean, they're not doing anything, but what I'm saying is that when you bring that new person front of your. You know, leader, make sure you edify your leader, so that way. You know, he will get the respect and the knowledge that, you know, whatever, he's saying they're, they're able to absorb. And also, be quiet, listen, right? And then they, let them ask questions. So it's always three ways. It's you, your person you're bringing, and you just edify your leader, right? And when you get there, you're in the middle, but you be quiet. Because you already edified your leader, now your partner is ready to listen. And when they do, right? They have all the questions answered, they're using the products, you know, all that. So the system really works, really great.
Yes, that is the basic for success. Thank you, thank you, madam. Yes, friends, anyone in Kaurana, interact, I don't know, interact, otherwise, we will close the session of our company motto. Thank you, leaders. So, morning, six o'clock, training program, as usual, every day. Thank you. Yes, friends, uh. And there, Buda, unmute, just, co, chandi, motto, Jepan, co, so, welcome, leaders. Welcome, everyone. Create the vision. Karve, new liberty. Come on, come on, let's do it. Come on, come on, let's do it. Thank you all, your team, masters, happy shopping, happy learning, happy.